Good afternoon and welcome to our Glendale City Council workshop. This meeting is for council members to review and discuss important issues, projects, and future council meeting agenda items. It's a work-study session only and allows the council to hear input from city staff. No action will be taken at this workshop, and there will not be an opportunity for public comment. This meeting is streaming live on Glendale's Facebook and YouTube pages and the city's cable television station, Glendale Channel 11. Thank you for joining us.
And good afternoon. Welcome to Glendale City Council Workshop Session of August 23rd, 2022. Meeting is called to order. I will not conduct attendance roll call. We do have a excused absence, Councilmember Clark. Other than that, all the other members are here. If you'd take note, please. With that, Ms. Barr, if you'll introduce our first item.
Council item of special interest: Transit ridership pre and post pandemic.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Here for our first item this afternoon will be presented, and I'll introduce first Shahid Abass, our Director of Transportation, and we'll be joined by our Transit Administrator, Kevin Link.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good afternoon, Mayor and the council. My name is Shahid Abass, Director of Public Works. I have transit editor. In April this year, Councilmember Tomachov requested as a council item of special interest, update from staff on transit ridership data. Today's staff will update the council on transit ridership numbers post-pandemic compared to pre-pandemic.
Yeah, hold on. I just need you to pull the microphone a little bit closer.
So today...
There you go. Perfect.
Today's staff will update the council on transit ridership numbers post-pandemic compared to pre-pandemic. Councilmember Tomachov was particularly interested in the Gus ridership data, the size of the buses, and possibility of downsizing to a smaller bus, depending upon how the ridership numbers are trending. Ridership on Gus is trending up, but still running at a 58% of pre-pandemic levels. Currently, we have two large 35-feet buses, which are exclusively used on our busiest downtown route. During pandemic, these buses gave us the flexibility and allowed for passengers to social distance themselves. As the ridership continues to increase, the use of the large buses will continue to provide space for social distancing while offering capacity needed to meet the future demand. Ridership on Dial-A-Ride was trending downward even before the start of the pandemic and continues to trend down, whereas the ridership on regional ADA service operated by Valley Metro has not shown the same trend. Ridership this year is projected at 86% of the pre-pandemic levels. With this brief summary, I shall now hand you over to Mr. Link, who will walk you through the ridership numbers in more detail.
Thank you, Mr. Abbas. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Happy to be here this afternoon to go over a little bit of the transit ridership pre and post-pandemic and then talk a little bit about our, how we utilize our transit fleet. So this afternoon, I'm going to recap Gus and Dial-A-Ride service real quick and review the Gus ridership for both services, pre and post-pandemic, as I mentioned. So as you all know, Gus, we operate three routes. Gus 1 is primarily in the downtown core area. Gus 2 runs to the east to 43rd Avenue, down to Montebello, as far north as northern. And then Gus 3 runs all the way up to Peoria, over to 67th Avenue, and down to northern also. Normally, we have nine buses in our Gus fleet, but we've been operating for the last 12 to 15 months with just six, two of which are the 33-passenger buses. We do have three smaller cutaways, which are 19-passenger buses on order. I have not heard yet, there was an issue with weight, so we had to go back and reconfigure it, so there's going to be a little bit of a, more of a lag time for those three buses. We only run the two larger buses on Gus 1. That's our heaviest route, and that's what we run the two larger buses on. Gus 2 and 3, we operate the smaller 19-passenger buses on. So this is just, why is that not working? Okay, sorry.
He's coming up behind you.
Okay, thank you. No, sorry. So this is just a quick overlay of the three routes, showing you the service area that we cover in Glendale, as I mentioned, up to Peoria and down to Montebello. The connection point for all three routes is at 55th and Northern, right across from the Walmart, so anybody can catch, get on one route and get off and catch either one or the other two. So this table is showing our ridership on Gus for the last six years. If you remember, we eliminated the Gus fares in early, in the fall of '17, fiscal '18, and then you can see the corresponding jump in fiscal '19 on ridership. And then, of course, the pandemic hit in February, March of '20, and the ridership started trailing off. But you can see that we've come back a little bit in '22. We're up a little bit, 18% over '21, so we're hoping we're on an upward trend and we're on our way back to the pre-pandemic levels. This is the same information, just showing to you in the line graph. You can see the peaks and valleys when school's out during the summer, a little bit, and then in the fall, it picks back up. So it's the same information, just in a different format. So this is '21 over '22. Obviously, on the left is fiscal '21, so you can see by route. So you can see the increase in all three routes. Ridership is on its way back from fiscal '21, so we're happy to see that. I think we're coming. And this is '22, the year we just completed, compared to the last full year, non-pandemic of fiscal '19. Fiscal '19 is on the left. As you can see, at times, we had to run a second Gus for Gus 1 because of the overflow and the, and we'd get run behind, so we put a second bus on.
Mayor, could I, if I could? So in 2019, were you running the 20, the max 20 night, the smaller buses?
On Gus 1, we ran the 30, the large bus.
Even in 2019, we had those big buses?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
So this is, just gives you a little bit of comparison to pre and post-pandemic and where we're at and how far we've got to go to get the ridership back. This is a picture of our newest, this is one of the larger Gus buses with the new logo. Everybody's seen that around town, I'm sure. And then this is a picture of the cutaway, the 19-passenger bus. We'll go to the new logo through attrition as the new buses roll in. So this slide gets into a little bit of the weeds, but I thought the information was pertinent for our discussion today. So on the left, you'll see the total miles that we put on the six buses in '22. The top two, D-11 and D-12, are the two larger ones. The middle, or the middle column is the amount of money we spent maintaining those. This includes fuel, maintenance, everything to maintain the vehicle. And then the far right column is the cost per mile. So you can see that while the bigger buses, especially D-12, it's a newer bus, so obviously the cost is going to be a little bit lower, but they're pretty comparable when you look at a cost per mile, as far as what it costs to operate them. So now I want to touch a little bit about paratransit, as it's just like Gus, it operates seven days a week, 365 days a year. Currently, in our Dial-A-Ride fleet, we have 21 buses with 12 passengers. I've got four on, on order and then four of the larger ones. I got an update to this slide. The four smaller buses have arrived in the region. Two of them have been delivered, but they're not in service yet. They're still going through their acceptance inspections. So the two smaller buses will seat eight, and then it'll still hold the same amount of wheelchairs, three, three wheelchairs on each bus. This is a slide on the paratransit ridership, going back to '19, pre-pandemic. You can see it's been tailing off the last four years. For fiscal '22, I think part of the reason for the lower ridership has got to do with our staffing levels. We're struggling with our operators, but we're trying to get some hired and get them on board. But obviously, the fewer buses I'm able to put on the street, the fewer passengers we're going to be able to move. But it was trending downward even before the pandemic hit. I'm hoping our new microtransit service that we're hoping to roll out and that we will roll out this fall, we'll bring some of those riders back and we'll see a little bit of a nut check on those, on that ridership. Again, this is the same information, just in line graph format, just showed you the peaks and valleys of the ridership over the last four years from '19 through '22. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions. I appreciate your time this afternoon.
Thank you, Mayor. So do you have any data on like days of the week and ridership? You know, do you have any data broken down for Gus? I first want to talk about Gus. More refined data on days of the week? I mean, I know we're looking at, for fiscal year 2022, and I would say the ridership, it's increasing, but the Gus 1, what's the highest number here? Looks like 4,900, right around 5,000? And that's not for 365 days, because it runs five days a week and then only one of them runs on Sunday? Do I understand that right?
Gus 1, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I guess my concern is, I mean, it's a big bus. How full is it all of the time? Because while the cost to operate right now for the larger bus is not a whole lot more, and I mean, a lot of this I've learned as I've served almost, I think, eight years now on the Valley Metro Board, is as they age, they become more expensive to operate. So it's only, I think, 234 a mile to operate right now. That's going to increase. It's a bigger, heavier vehicle, uses more fuel, all of that. So are we, you know, are, would we able, would be able to provide the same accommodations to our residents that use this service on smaller vehicles? And I know some cities around the country are starting to pivot towards passenger vans because you can plug in and move, you're way more flexible if you don't have big vehicles and on, when you anticipate in the downtown area or other things happening, you can accommodate that, but you're not driving that big thing around, you know, five days a week and one of them on Sunday.
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachov, I did go back and look at the daily numbers. Gus 1, when school is in session, runs about 160 passengers a day. So that averages out to roughly 12, 13 passengers a trip. We, you know, during the, with the pandemic still ongoing, we're trying to keep ourselves flexible and that we're still offering, you know, the ability to social distance as we can. If, if the ridership start in a downward trend, it's something we would certainly look at. Gus 2 and 3, with the 19-passenger, the issue there is the amount of wheelchairs that we move. We sometimes pick up three, four wheelchairs on one trip around, so it reduces the number of ambulatory passengers we can put on, so it's, it's hard to, you know, I, I don't think we could get to the point where we could go to a nine-passenger van. Operationally, it's, it just gives us a little bit more room to load groceries for the operator to get on, tie down the wheelchair, bend over, tie down, position the wheelchair within the side, within the inside of the bus. So we will certainly keep watching it, you know, as the ridership dictates. Now, if Gus 1, you know, for whatever reason were to drop, the ridership would drop, we'd certainly would look at reducing and going to a smaller bus, absolutely. But I will tell you, on Gus 2, summer, a couple of trips down around the community center, we picked up 20 people on one, on one stop. And that was on a 19-passenger bus, so we had standing room only. So it's hit and miss, but we certainly will, will track it, and if it gets to the point where we can do it smarter and cheaper with a smaller vehicle, we'll certainly look into it and keep that option open.
Mayor, if I could continue. I mean, my bigger concern is really with the larger bus. I mean, I'm, I'm, I think we're all familiar, and I think 20 passengers at least, or 19, you know, may be a little bit more of a sweet spot. And you said that we're, we're running 106 passengers, but 12 to 13 on school days. Well, you could accommodate that many people in a 15-passenger van. That is far less expensive to acquire, far less expensive to operate, you know, all of those things. So I just, I guess I just want to say that I want to, you know, especially with the changing technologies and microtransit and some of the rideshare companies are now, I know they're having trouble labor, everybody's having labor issues right now, but some of the, the rideshare companies are looking, I mean, there's a, there's a niche opportunity there for providing paratransit and things like that to kind of plug in holes, you know, in the transit system. So I just don't want us to box ourselves into a corner with too many big expensive vehicles when, you know, I don't know whether we're, you know, I mean, how often is that, is the Gus 1, how often is that full with, you know, 30, 33 people?
Post-pandemic, not that often. I'll be honest. During the, during the school year, there are trips, a couple of trips in the morning, a couple of trips in the afternoon, that is standing room only, but not near as often as it was pre-pandemic. Will we get back to that point? I don't know. We'll see. But pre-pandemic, it was very often, there was probably five, six trips a day where it was standing room only, but we'll, but it's not nearly that, at that point currently. So I agree with you. We can, you know, we'll, we'll keep an eye on it. Again, I, you know, I just, I like the flexibility it gives us in as far as the, the social distancing aspect of it. We still have some riders that are leery about getting on just because of the, you know, closeness and everything. So it's something we can certainly look at as the technology changes, like you said, and advances. We can, we look, we'll certainly look downsizing if we need to.
Mayor, just a couple more things. So we don't have any of the, of the larger Gus 1 fleet on order. We're basically going to, and I mean, I, those are, you said, probably three years, maybe four years they've been in service?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachov, I am, we are programmed to order a replacement 33-passenger bus this year. This would replace one of the two that we have up and running. So we haven't ordered it yet. Yeah, with the, all the issues, the supply chain and the chassis issues, I'm just leery about ordering. I'm looking at options to see if there's another vendor that we could possibly get it sooner. But no, we, we haven't ordered yet, but we're programmed to. We have the funding to do that.
Yeah, Mayor, I'm well aware of it. I know Valley Metro had to basically switch manufacturers and the, on 17 months on back order for 15-passenger vans, but I guess my point is that we could accommodate the same number of riders with two 15-passenger vans as we could with that big Gus bus, and then we have more flexibility, there are less, they, one can be taken out of service for summer and times when we're not in, when it's not the school year, when fewer people are using it. So I don't know, you know, how many miles are on the bus that's being, being replaced or that you're ordering the replacement for?
The one that we're replacing has roughly, I think, like 130,000 on it.
And these are diesel?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. For me, I would say maybe we hold off and see if the ridership continues, and I don't know what the cost difference would be between two 15-passenger vans. You have, I just feel a lot more flexibility, and I'm, I'm hearing some of the things other cities are talking about doing too, to, to provide more flexibility and try to keep the cost down on, on, you know, we still want to provide the service to people, but we don't want to overspend and have more out there than people are even using. So, I mean, they depreciate, they age, and they need to be replaced, whether they're really, whether, you know, five people are riding them or 33 people are riding them. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else?
Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Link. On page, slide 11, you line out the cost for the D-11 and for the D-12, same number of passengers. Is the difference in the cost there, technology is better? Is it simply that the newer bus operates more efficiently and as it gets older, it operates less efficiently?
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, that's correct. It's an older bus. So as Councilmember Tomachov was saying, as the buses age, they become more costly to maintain. So that's the difference between 11 and 12.
And then, if I may, Mayor, we would assume that in a few years, D-12, the cost of its operation will go up?
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, I, yeah, that's only natural. It's going to, the cost is going to go up once the warranty expires and, yes.
Okay. I was just wanting to be clear whether there was a significant difference between the various years of the bus, that, you know, they've made them more efficient or have better repair records or what, but it's just as they age, they get more expensive.
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, this is a newer bus. It's the only one that we have that has a low floor, so it doesn't have the lift, so it's easier to maneuver. It's, it's a nicer bus than the old cutaways with the engine in front and the lift. It's more mechanically sound so far, but as you said, it's a newer bus, so the operators like it. It's, like I said, maneuvering downtown is a piece of cake, so that's, depending on what we decide to do with the replacement, we were looking to go with another one of these, but we'll see.
And this is the D-12 then, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, Mayor, if I could, I, so I noticed that it's, according to this, 80 cents a mile more expensive to run the older bus. We're running it 18,000 miles a year, so that's about 15,000 a year is the delta there. That's what the older bus is costing us, that it wouldn't be costing us if it were the newer bus, I guess is the way to put it. And, you know, 15,000 is 15,000, but, you know, we need to get the life out of these, you know, the capital upfront is expensive, and we need to get that life out of it too.
Correct. And the two larger buses, they're 200, 250,000-mile buses, seven years, so that's their life expectancy.
That 150.
And, and D-11 did have some downtime. We had some issues with the AC, so that's why, and 12 was down for, we had electronic issues with our enunciator, so, yeah, 11 had the lion's share of the miles, and 22, we try to keep that even, to even it up and, you know, rotate them every other day or whatever.
Right. And if I can, Mayor, and I would say that if we had a large fleet, that that money would add up quite quickly and would certainly be something to, to sharpen our pencils on. I will say that I think the Gus program that we have is very valuable to a certain cross-section of our residents. They are dependent on it. It's not a luxury or an option to them. They're dependent on it. I'm, I'm happy that ridership is climbing back to pre, in the sense that people are coming, people that need it are taking advantage of it again. I just, I don't know what we do in the way of publicizing it and letting people know what's out there for them. And, and actually, it's a, it's a fine system, and then any of our residents should be happy to ride on it if it serves their needs and covers many, you know, very good places in Glendale to go. And it's a free ride home at night. No, how late in the evening does it run?
Gus 1 runs to about 6:30. Gus 2 comes off the road at 5:00, and Gus 3 at 4:00.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Question on page four, Gus 1 runs in that orange area. How do you determine which of these routes gets the 365 days a year travel?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Odoma, this, Gus 1 has always, since its inception, has run seven days a week, 365 days a year. When we, when we revamped Gus 2 and slid it to the east, we looked at possibly expanding service to Saturdays, but we wanted to try it out first, the new route, to see if the ridership would be there. Gus 3, due to the, the activity centers and the locations we serve, other than Walmart, you know, the library and the senior center and, and, some of those weren't open on the weekends, so we thought, well, we'll run it Monday through Friday. To be honest, the ridership probably is not there yet to expand the service hours for those two routes. We certainly could take a look at it, but I, I think we need to get back a little bit as far as the ridership goes, the pre-pandemic, before we look at expanding hours.
Well, thank you for that history, and I wasn't asking to expand. My, my specific question was, how do, how do you determine which of these routes are 365 days a year? How did you determine that? Just, it's always been that way, so we've kept it that way?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Odoma, yes. So Gus 1 has always been, has been published as running 365 days a year. So, and that's the heaviest used route, just because of the locations it serves. So, and our ridership on the weekends and holidays is fairly, fairly good. So we, that's why we've kept that running, the seven days a week.
So, thank you for that. A part of that's my district, so I'm not advocating for or against. There's, doesn't sound like there's any ream or rhyme to how you guys determined that. It's just been that way. So I feel like it would be the opportunity to go back and see if Gus 3 need to have that 365? Do we, do we alternate from Gus 1 to Gus 2 to Gus 3, 300? I, I don't know what we do, but we need to look at whether or not these other routes need 365 days a year. And so the numbers could be skewered because you're serving all year round in one, in Gus 1?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Odoma, I agree. We, we can look at it. No, 2 and 3 have never ran on the weekend since they've started. We just never expanded it. Part of it is the labor and the resources available to do that, but it's something we can look at.
Yeah, I think we need to look at. We don't know what the ridership will look like in 2 and 3 areas if we don't study it. So I would ask that the council support bringing back some information on, do we need that in 2 and 3? Thank you.
My question goes back to this graph where you have a cost per mile. What, what determines cost per mile? Is that the cost of the vehicle, the maintenance of the vehicle, the labor of the vehicle, the insurance of the vehicle? Is it everything?
Mayor, yes, that's correct. Everything but the labor. So the total amount of money we spent, fuel, maintenance, everything, divided by the number of miles that we operated it that year.
Except for labor?
Except for labor. Labor is not included in that.
Okay. Maybe in future...
Maintenance labor, I'm sorry, Mayor. Maintenance labor, as far as the shop, working on vehicles, that is included, but my labor is not.
Okay, the drivers.
The drivers.
Okay. Maybe in the future, you could, you could also give that to us.
Sure.
That gives me a, a better idea. One of the points Councilmember Tomachov was making is possibly to have a large bus, have a couple smaller ones, but then you're going to have additional labor charges, and so that's what I was trying to figure out, is if this included labor, that wouldn't be as valid. If it doesn't include labor, then it's more valid.
Okay. Go ahead. Good point. Thank you. And I just wanted to clarify, my interest was not necessarily to do away with this service. I just wanted to make sure that our, find out, are we right? Honestly, I was really surprised when I saw the big Gus buses driving around, and I wondered how many people are using that size bus. That's really what one wondered. And then the conversations I've had with colleagues from other cities about really trying to right-size this and not, you know, and I mean, we can provide more service if we really, you know, make sure that we're not spending money we don't have to. Which brings me to, you had said that we were replacing Gus 1 bus with 150,000 miles on it, and then you said that they're, they're 250,000-mile buses. So why would we be replacing a bus on 150,000 miles if it's a 250,000-mile bus?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachov, it's, it's seven years or 200,000 miles. So if the bus gets to be seven, eight years old, then it's, it's replaceable, according to FTA. So they don't always coincide, especially if you have one that breaks down a lot and it gets expensive to maintain. Once it reaches the life expectancy, then we're programmed, the funding is programmed to replace those buses every seven years. So that's, it's, it's a nor, not necessarily an and. Seven years and 200,000 miles, it's whichever comes first. Now, if it's in good shape, you know, and it's, and it's reached seven years, but it's only got 150, we'll, we'll hold on to it as long as it doesn't get to be too expensive to maintain.
Okay. I would say, based on, you know, we're waiting for ridership, I don't know. I mean, they drive the miles whether people are getting off and on or not. I mean, they're programmed to, but these, these, this fleet is not federally funded by federal grants. We purchase these ourselves, right?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachov, no. Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, no, the capital for the circulators are funded by FTA, and the region matches the match, Prop 400. So we have no local money in our, in any of our transit fleet, that's correct.
Okay. If, I'd like to go to, move on to paratransit quickly, if everybody else is, what was our, what was our cost to provide the paratransit service overall for last fiscal year, or we probably don't have that for the, for the 1920 fiscal year, then?
I, are you looking for the total cost, or the cost per trip?
Just the, just our total, basically, you know, what was the line item for the total cost to provide this service? I think it was somewhere about, between one and a half and $2 million, wasn't it?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, the fully loaded cost that I report to NTD to FTA was about 2.2 or 2.3 million. But that's, that's all the overhead costs that were charged and everything, so that, that's the, that's the number we report to FTA. So it was about 2.2 million, I think, for the paratransit mode, but that includes a lot of other stuff.
Right, yeah, I mean, labor costs, I know that's, that's a fully loaded cost.
Indirect costs, yes.
Okay, I mean, it just, this is a, basically an uncontrollable cost, because it's an on-demand service, so it's complicated to plan for. I mean, it's a service, it's certainly needed, and, but, I mean, every city in the valley is experiencing, I mean, initially, we were told it would cost us about $400,000, and I think even that first year, it was well over a million, and since then, it's doubled, at least. So, I know that there, there's a lot of talk about pivoting to, you know, ride choice, you know, loaded debit cards and things like that, to be able to accommodate getting people, you know, where, that they want to go, and also trying to eliminate any abuse that may exist in the system that's costing a lot of money. So, I mean, I just, you know, we'll just keep, keep our fingers crossed that we can get that cost down, because it's incredibly expensive service to provide. But I think, I mean, I think, you know, hopefully eventually, we can, we can actually probably provide better service to the paratransit riders at a lower cost, but we're just not, we're just not there yet.
Mayor? I'm back on page four, so you have GUS 1, 2, and 3. Do you know off the top of your head now, what are the mileage for each route?
Yes, GUS 1 is just under seven miles, GUS 2 is eight and a half, and GUS 3 is just under 10.
Okay, so not, not a real huge discrepancy on, on that.
Except for GUS 1, GUS 1's a shorter route, GUS 1 is a 30-minute route, and 2 and 2 is about a 45-minute route, and GUS 3 is about a 50-minute route.
They just look larger on the map, yeah, so I was gonna ask a question, but there's not really big discrepancies here, they're about the same. Okay, now, we talked a little bit about studying whether or not areas, different areas need the 365 days a year. Could you do that by, how would you do that, would you do that by surveying, or what would be the most efficient way to do that?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Odoma, that would probably be where we start, we would probably go out and hit the assisted living centers, the Waymarks, the Manistees, the Glen Crofts of the world, to see if there's any interest in operating that service, providing that service, you know, Saturdays, Sundays, combination. We would start there, just get some input from them, those are predominantly our ridership on those two routes.
Yeah, and, and a question could be, but I think a better question, question to ask is, but, a good question to ask is, would you use it? But a better question would ask is, why don't you use it, is it because it's not available, right, on those days? And then lastly, do you know, and you don't have to give it to me now, but do you know the cost difference between the areas that don't have the 365 and the area that does? Since the mileage isn't too bad, too much of a difference, do you know what that cost is, can you get that to us, the difference?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Odoma, are you talking about like the cost to run each route?
Well, yeah, because you're not driving, you're not doing, you're out Saturday and Sunday, no holidays, so there's a gap, there is a cost for that.
Correct.
What would that cost be, what's the difference, not today, but you can get that back to us. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, I just have one question regarding more into the future. And I've talked to, asked about this question in the past. As things change in the districts, in the Swallow District, we have a lot more elderly people, a lot of children are graduated from school and leaving home, and then parents are left on more fixed income, and makes it more of a need for having a little bit better intra-city transportation. Have we looked at expanding this into other parts of the city that may need that service a little bit more as things progress into the future? And how do you do that, and is that something you can do?
Mayor, Councilmember Malinar, at one time, we did have in our plan on expansion out in the Westgate area, and expansion in the Arrowhead area, for a circulator service. Over the course of years, those were pushed out, if you will, so we don't, currently, we do not have anything in our tenure plan to expand our circulator routes in Glendale. It's something that I've kept in the back of my mind, and I, I think you're right, I think it could be a good service to move up north in Arrowhead area. Where, we haven't done any public outreach on it or anything to see, you know, if it would be used, or if residents would be attuned to it. But right now, currently, no, we do not have anything in the planning stages or funded program to expand the circulator service in Glendale.
Well, it'd be my opinion that we should be looking at that, because as the city changes and grows and develops, areas change and needs change, and I think there may be a greater need as moving further north. I don't know if all the way to Arrowhead, but if people shop in Arrowhead, then yes. I think having a larger, even people from downtown Glendale, who aren't able to get to Arrowhead using this circulator, and again, I know there's other buses, and that should be part of the, I guess, the consideration. You know, what other buses are available, is there really a need for a GUS bus going to Arrowhead from downtown? And if we have five buses going up 59th and over to 75th, there's really maybe not a need for that. But I would hope that we would put that, at least in our, back of our mind, as studying that as the city ages in these older neighborhoods, as to whether or not we need to add additional circulation, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, a couple of questions, one from, actually, one from a resident. All of our GUS buses are wheelchair accessible, ADA compatible, and of course, our paratransit buses.
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, that's correct, all accessible.
Thank you very much. And thinking about additional routes and that sort of thing, is it possible, and have we given consideration to perhaps running a game day circulator between downtown and Westgate?
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, that's not something that we've currently looked at, as far as back and forth, moving folks from downtown out to Westgate area. There was talk, as I mentioned earlier, when we were looking to expand to the circulator out in the Westgate area, we're looking at possibly coming as far east, maybe as, you know, 67th or 59th. But no, right now, there's, we have nothing, nothing on the books or planned, a shuttle of that sort.
I think it might be interesting to consider a special event circulator, rather, you know, kind of barbell shaped, that would make a loop in the downtown, go out Glendale, make a loop at Westgate, come back. And just, you know, as you go down the road, that might be something I'd be interested in seeing, you know, just as an idea, you know, let's see if it's workable.
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, thanks. One issue I think we have there is we have a service on Glendale Avenue and the 70th, so when we start duplicating service, FTA kind of, especially if we're using FTA-funded assets, if we're running two routes, basically, on the same path. But that's something we can certainly look at, yes, sir.
If, if on special event days, we had increased ridership to where the one, the existing route was insufficient, maybe they would consider it. But just, just for looking at, thanks.
Anyone else?
Okay.
Thank you.
They're getting ready, if you can introduce item number two.
AN 239, annexation for the southwest corner of Peoria Avenue and Cotton Lane.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report on both item number two and item number three is our planning manager, Tabitha Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. As Mr. Phelps indicated, I will be presenting two items before you this afternoon, that is requesting council's input, and hopefully a consensus to proceed forward with these two annexation proposals. The first one is annexation AN 239, it is identified as Cotton and Peoria Retail Center. The subject site is approximately nine acres in size, and it is located at the southwest corner of Peoria Avenue and Cotton Lane. The property is currently in the county jurisdiction with RU43 zoning classification, which will allow for one dwelling unit per acre. Upon annexation, the city would apply the most compatible light zoning, which would be RR45, which also would allow for a single-family residence. The applicant, provided council gives a consensus to move forward with the annexation, is proposing a minor general plan amendment to change the land use designation to PC, Plan Commercial, and a rezoning application to change the light zoning from A1 to C2, which is the general commercial zoning district, to allow for approximately 37,000 square feet of building area. The proposal for this percentage of building area would consist of three restaurants, and a national retail end-user, as well as a convenience store with a gas station. Here's a vicinity map that depicts the proposed site location, which is approximately 14 miles west-north of City Hall. Here is the current annexations map that depicts the AN 239 proposal that is before you right now. And if you look just to the south, the AN 240 would be the next item on the agenda. Here's the annexation map that shows that the subject property does abut the city boundary lines. To the north is the City of Surprise, and City of Surprise will have jurisdiction and control over Peoria Avenue. To the east is a property that the council approved annexation, and the rezoning application to PAD for a, PAD that's entitled Parkway 303. Council may recall, with this proposal, it included approximately 60,000 square feet of commercial land uses along the frontage of Peoria Avenue. To the west is Maricopa County, and those are some residential land uses. And Maricopa County will have the control of Cotton Lane. And just in that corner where you see the City of Glendale, that is identified as San Hera Falls, and that is approximately 600 single lots for residential development. Here's an area map, just to give greater context to what I just described, the surrounding land uses. As part of the annexation analysis for the proposal, a third-party entity provided staff with a fiscal impact summary based on assumptions, and with that assumption, it was based on a blended assumption of retail and restaurant land uses. And that summary indicated that it would be a positive gain to the city with one-time revenues at, estimated at $260,000, and the annual net benefit to the city excluding the one-time revenues being $230,000 per year. If council provides a consensus to move forward with this annexation proposal, the next steps would be the blank petition for public input, followed by the adoption of the annexation. And with that, Mayor and Council, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Mayor? Thank you, the assumptions on the fiscal impact were for 37,000 in retail, square feet in retail plus, or either plus or including three restaurants. Is that assumption based on what the developer is interested in, or is that just a, our rule of thumb assumption? And are those, second question, are those restaurants considered, are we using a fast-food restaurant model, or a sit-down restaurant model?
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, that is based on the proposal that is being presented by the applicant, and based on the narrative, the restaurants would incorporate like a drive-through, so we can assume at least one or two would be fast food, and it potentially could be sit-in restaurant.
Thank you.
Anyone else? And you need a consensus right now?
Yes, Mayor.
Is there a consensus?
Yes.
Okay, you have a consensus.
Thank you.
Item number three.
AN 240, Cotton 303 Industrial Annexation, located at the northeast corner of 173rd Avenue and Olive Avenue.
Mayor and Council, this is the second annexation proposal on the agenda for this afternoon, and as indicated, is annexation proposal AN 240, identified as Cotton 303 Industrial Annexation. The subject site is approximately 64 acres in size, and it is located at the northwest corner of 173rd Avenue and Olive Avenue. The subject site is within the county jurisdiction right now, with the classification of zoning is RU43 for the single-family residential. The city most compatible light zoning would be A1. Currently, the general plan land use designation identifies it as LDR 2.5, and the proposal would be for a minor general plan amendment to change the land use designation to RMU, and to resume, rezone the property to PAD to allow for approximately 1 million square feet of industrial development. Here is a vicinity map that depicts the subject site from City Hall, which is approximately 14 miles west and north of City Hall. Current annexations map, again, just showing you the proposal that's before you right now in comparison to other proposals or applications that is currently going through the annexation process. Here's the annexation map that depicts the subject site in comparison to other property that has been annexed into the City of Glendale. Peoria Avenue, as well as Cotton Lane, will be controlled by the county. Let me sure get that right, let me look real quick here, I apologize. And here is your area map that depicts the surrounding land uses and property that has been annexed into the city. Here is a conceptual site plan, this site plan is currently being reviewed by the city, as well as the county, as indicated. The county, one correction here, the county does have control of Cotton Lane, as well as Olive Lane, I apologize, it is not Peoria Avenue. So it's currently under review, and the applicant is proposing two access points off of 173rd, as well as two access points off of Olive Avenue. And it's projected to have either one major end-user building, or potentially have two separate buildings with two different end-users. Once again, staff was provided by a third entity of fiscal impact. Once again, staff was provided by a third entity, a fiscal impact summary, and the assumption that it would be generate a positive net fiscal impact to the city with the approximately 1 million square feet of development. With one-time fees estimated at 4.2 million, and with the annual revenue of $240,000 per year. Here's just a bar chart that's depicting this from a different perspective. And if council provides a consensus to proceed forward, the next step would be for the blank petition for the public input, followed by the public hearing on the adoption of the annexation. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. Is this within the Loop contour? You didn't provide an overlay, but I looked it up myself, and based on my mind overlay, it looks like it's not in the Loop contour.
Mayor, councilwoman Tomachov, that is correct, it is not.
Okay. So I'm a little confused why we would be parking in a million-square-foot industrial park essentially right in the middle of a neighborhood when it's not in the Loop contour. I can understand if the property was limited for development because of the Loop contour, but this is not the case here. And, I mean, I've been perfectly fine with this type of zoning and industrial uses when you're across an arterial street. You're separated by, you know, two or three lanes of traffic, but this literally is right in the middle, surrounded to the west and to the north by residential, rural residential homes. Just curious why, why we're presenting this. I mean, obviously, the applicant wants that, but normally, the reason for this is because it's the only type of zoning that you can do within the Loop, the rezone you can do within the Loop contour.
Mayor, councilwoman Tomachov, as you indicated, part of it is because the applicant wanted to have an opportunity to show a proposal for council consideration for the annexation. Number one, just to see if council would have a consensus to proceed forward. And as they go through the rezoning application process with staff and McDOT, we're trying to listen to the concerns that are coming from the residents, and potentially propose the appropriate type of setbacks that will alleviate some of the concerns that is coming from the residents. We're very early in that process, and the applicant did not want to continue forward with the amount of work that they're doing with, working with the residents to mitigate some of their concerns, as well as working with McDOT if they didn't have the consensus of council to at least hear out the annexation and rezoning application.
Mayor, may I continue?
Go ahead.
Thank you. You know, I mean, we've benefited tremendously from the strip annexation and the industrial, the jobs it's provided out there, you know, and I'm all for that. But I can in good conscience be okay with, literally, the only place it's not surrounded is on the southern portion of that parcel, to the, there's several lots west, and I believe this is the Clearwater Farms neighborhood, am I correct?
Mayor, councilwoman Tomachov, I'm not certain of that.
It's rural residential. I mean, I know there are mini ranch-type parcels, and that's what the people are using out there. And, I mean, we've heard before from residents out there that have not been happy with some of the industrial that's happened out there, but it's been because it's within the Loop contour, and I believe the property owners have the right to sell. The younger people maybe don't want to be farmers, and they're creating generational wealth by moving forward like this. And I totally support that. And even if it hasn't been completely within the Loop contour, it's at least been across an arterial street away with some sort of buffer from the residential neighborhoods. But I can in good conscience, for me, be okay with this in this instance. Thank you.
Mr. Phelps?
Mayor, members of the council, so just a couple of things for consideration by the council. One, when the council adopted several years ago, the, our annexation policy for this area, it was contemplated that there may be situations where, because the council did not want to permit additional residential, that there may be potential areas for conflict. The other option would be, would be to not annex the area, which the city has the right to do, and then they would be allowed to go through the permitting process with the county to get a similar type of entitlement. So it's just, it's a unique situation. We felt like in these areas, because we are sensitive to how the development and the setbacks are, that us being in control of that and dictating the way the design happens, that we would be able to better protect the neighborhoods. And so, again, this is consistent. We have had other areas that have abutted with only a street separation. But again, we've had a lot of discussion internally about how we would, you know, kind of force the site plan in that direction. But again, the council could choose not to annex the area, but that wouldn't stop the applicant from then working with Maricopa County, and all indications are that would likely be, you know, the same kind of uses would be approved.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. I remember that we've had this conversation before, but now that we're here at this roadblock here, so how do we differ from the county on their design standards? And how would they, how would we better protect the residents than the county if they went to the county? Because that's exactly what's going to happen. They want to pursue it. Can you, do you know those?
Mayor, vice mayor, let me be clear. We don't know what Maricopa County would do, but we know that if it's going through our planning, that we could, you know, we can really force buffering and landscaping and the way that the traffic works to try to minimize that. So I think it'd be unfair to say Maricopa County wouldn't care and just stick it somewhere. But again, I know that we would be able to pay close attention to that. So we think that at the end of the day, the use is going to be there. The question then is, you know, do we want that inside the city limits? And we work really hard to try to minimize the impact, or do we not go forward with the annexation? And then we just let that be an issue between the residents in Maricopa County?
Yeah, I think what I'm hearing is, and it's where I am with this, is I have more confidence in the City of Glendale's design standards and processes and procedures, only because I know them, but I don't know the counties. So is this something where we need to find out what they are? And if we didn't go through this annexation and we gave it, and the county took it, we would have no input in that, correct? The county doesn't come to us and ask us for any design standards or anything?
Mayor, vice mayor Odoma, members of council, so, and I'm going to ask maybe Tabitha quickly to respond to this. It has been my impression, and she can certainly feel free to correct me if I've misinterpreted this, I believe that our design standards typically for these kind of projects are a little bit more robust than what has typically been approved in the county. And so we feel like the overall quality of the structure going in, and the amount of effort they used to articulate the building, try to, you know, to soften the appearance, our standards are a different standard than in the county. Now, it doesn't mean the county couldn't adopt stricter standards than what they have on the books, but maybe I'll let our planning manager address that.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, I'll echo what Mr. Phelps said. What he said is absolutely 100% correct. One of the things, I think, just to take in consideration, the conceptual site plan that you're seeing right now, it has been modified as the applicant has been working with McDOT to talk about the access points. So two ways to look at it is, there's one way for us to control the design of it. Because they would be going for a PAD, it allows us the ability to give appropriate setbacks from the property, to require the applicant to give enhanced lush landscape and to give additional buffering if needed. And from my understanding, at this point, McDOT is supportive to the application to where, they're to a point to where they're approving the proposed access points. It has not been finalized, but they are taking a second look at that. So if it does not occur within the City of Glendale limits, it very well so could occur within the county.
Mayor, if I may, so what I'm hearing is the question I was going to ask, and I think you may have just answered it, it's likely, you know it's likely that the county will take this application and most likely approve it through their process, is what you're saying?
Mayor and council, I cannot say that directly, since I don't work for the county. I'm lucky to work for the City of Glendale.
Just with the information you have.
Based on the information that I have, there would be strong reasons to say that the county would, could potentially be supportive of it if it came through their office, but it would require entitlements as well.
And thank you for that. And the reason why I was going to ask that question, but I think you partially answered, and I know you don't know exactly, but the question the councilmember had, councilwoman Tomachov is, or comment she made, and I agree, is this project is encroaching on residents in that area significantly. I understand what the city manager's saying is, is if we take it, we're confident that we're going to work with the residents on some of the design issues that they may have. And if we don't take it, we have to trust that the county's going to do the same, but we don't. I was thinking that maybe, you didn't have any information whether or not the county was going to take this. Sounds like there might be, and it might be likely. That's all I have for now, thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah, hold on. I've got some questions too.
Okay.
So this conceptual site plan, I have been brought up my entire life, always assuming that north is on the top of the page. And as I look at this, I think that north is actually to the left. Is that correct?
Mayor and council, if you're looking at the site plan, it is to the right, where you see Mountain View. That is defined as the north.
Okay, so, okay, so that's one, clarifies one thing for me. Secondly, at the bottom of that conceptual site plan, it looks as though the lines with all the dashes would be railroad tracks.
Mayor, council, that is correct.
Even though most railroad tracks have two rails, these only have one rail. But the reason I'm bringing that up is, that area, one of the reasons it's been so popular is because it's one of the very, very, very few places that has rail service available. I, at this point today, don't want to say that I'm not willing to look at everything if it has the potential of possibly an industrial area coming in that would need light rail, I'm not light rail, need rail service available, when it appears to me that this has that available. I don't want to close any doors today. I just wanted to confirm that that's the way I was seeing this. I wish the map was actually north of, but anyway.
Next time.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. I'd just like to point out that the county would be subject to the same public hearings and everything. I mean, that they would be, I mean, assuming that they would be unresponsive to the residents that surround this, I think is a pretty big assumption. So I'd just like to point that out, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor, thank you. A few things. This, as far as I can tell, would be the only industrial development west of Cotton Lane. I am concerned that it's, in essence, nestled in with some large lot, like what we would call horse property, one-acre, you know, farmsteads. On the north half of it, and then on the south half, it appears that it's, if they haven't been developed yet, it's been entitled for a typical residential neighborhood there. I've always been taught that you didn't put industrial right up against neighborhoods, and that you had transitions and that sort of thing. In the past, when we've been looking at the industrial-type developments in this area, they have always been, except down at Allen Ranches, they, you know, everything's been east of Cotton, and it's had the major arterial at least separating it, whereas this doesn't, and it only has 173rd Avenue. This site plan shows an automobile entrance, and it looks like two tractor-trailer entrances off of 173rd Avenue, which would be right across the street from residential, and that, I don't know how else they can get vehicles in and out of their property, big tractor-trailer rigs, but that's one of the things that has always been a sore spot for the neighbors out there. This site also doesn't show that they're utilizing that railroad spur and siding that's there, and I'd be curious, what's the future of that? Is that going to be abandoned? Is it, because then we end up with an unannexed strip between them and Cotton Lane that can be problematic and an eyesore so. And if they're not going to use that, then they don't get credit for being close to it, and, you know, this is something that's vital. And the other thing I'm concerned about is, it's not like we're running out of suitable space in our western area for industrial development. And so we would be allowing this, as opposed to them locating somewhere else, perhaps in our, in our area, or somewhere in the West Valley. Not a big fan of residential out there, but we don't necessarily control that, and it's possible that if it went to the county, the county would say no to industrial, but they might say yes to residential because it's surrounded by residential. I'm not opposed to annexing it, but I'm not very comfortable with the proposed use.
Mayor? Mr. Phelps?
Just because of the questions here, maybe we can call up our new Development Services Director, who just happens to be pretty familiar with this property and what's in and around there, and so while this is no longer his kind of area of expertise in theory, I think he can at least walk you through what the lay of the land is a little bit better than maybe what the map indicates. So Randy Huggins, our Development Services Director.
Hello. Oh, there it is. Mayor, council, I just wanted to explain the site plan a little bit more, and why this was a buffer between what's existing. The white section there with the railroad tracks is actually a heavy industrial use. It's a fertilizer manufacturer that is using the active rail. They bring in ingredients for fertilizer and ship fertilizer from that facility. The reason they're not moving that facility is because it's very difficult to find land to move a fertilizer plant.
Is that Fertizona?
Fertizona, yes. So in an effort to find a buffer and a way to use that property where you're not putting something else right up against what would be a heavy industrial user, their thought process was to put a lighter industrial building. And then within this light industrial building, they would put a buffer, which is a loop road that runs around the entire facility. So basically, you would have 173rd, and then an internal loop road, and landscaping and buffering, and then a truck court, and then a building. So it's actually more than probably a couple hundred feet from the actual residential properties. And that's the stuff that they've been working with our traffic control folks, our transportation folks, the county's transportation folks, to find ways to keep trucks from using the residential roads, so they will have no trucks using Mountain View, there's not an access to Mountain View because of the rail. And beyond the midpoint of this property, what the county has given guidance on, at least their transportation folks, is not to have trucks go beyond the midpoint. So on the map that we're seeing here, even though it's turned sideways, approximately where the two buildings, there's a space between where there's parking spaces, there would be no trucks going north of that. So you wouldn't be sending any semi-trucks or anything like that into neighborhoods. Then the way that they're also accomplishing that is not just signs, but they're putting in some type of pork chop-type device that would prevent trucks from going any further that way, beyond, that direction, beyond the signs. So this was, this was actually contemplated as a buffer. It isn't like they just thought industrial would go great on this side of the road. It was a buffer between the heavy industrial and the rail.
Questions? Go ahead.
I just had some additional questions, not related necessarily to what we just said, but the proposed property that we discussed previously is directly to the north. Is that correct, Tabitha?
Mayor, council, that is correct.
And that property already, it looks like there's already residential or something already there. So have they purchased all those residential properties? I mean, it looks, on the map here, I'm seeing pictures of, maybe they're just individual parcels, maybe there's no residential, but it appears that there are some residential, or buildings at least, on that property. So were they, have they purchased those properties?
Mayor, council, I think it's the way it was drawn on to just show the subject property, that it crossed over to the residential, if I'm following you correctly.
I got the question.
Okay. All right, and the second question I had is, down towards the southern part of this property that we're discussing, there, it looks like it's a plotted neighborhood that doesn't appear to have any homes in it, based on the overhead pictures we're looking at now. Is that correct, that they, it's a plot, or?
Are you talking about immediately to the west?
Immediately to the west of the southern boundary, along Olive Avenue.
Mayor and council, it does depict as if it's a subdivision with lots.
But, I mean, are houses that are built there?
Mayor and council, I'm not 100% sure if they are actually built as of today or if they're under construction.
Because all the other neighborhoods have pictures of little houses on them, whereas that one doesn't. And so I was just wondering if that is simply a piece of empty land right now, and doesn't have any, any building on it.
Mayor, councilmember Monarch, that parcel is actually, it's plotted, but there are no houses on it. There's also no access from that parcel on to 173rd. So all of the homes there will go directly to Olive or to the next street, which I believe is on.
So they won't have any traffic coming out of them?
No access to 173rd, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I, overall, am okay with this project, as long as, and again, I appreciate the description of the buffering. I think that's really critical. I also appreciate very much the description of the very much the description of the, the separation of the high industrial on the, from the Fertizone complex. That is actually, it makes sense that no one would build homes on that property next to it. That would be, to me, contrary to what I would want to live next to that. And I get that. So with that, I don't have any other major concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. What type of height are, you said that they've already got tentative plans submitted on the second floor. So what type of height are you looking for, for the industrial development?
The max building height that was discussed originally, this has been months ago, I haven't, I can't quite read what's on there, but was maximum of 56 feet of the actual building, though it may say within the zoning a little higher in case there's equipment on the roof or things like that.
Okay, Mayor, if I could, it'd be incredibly difficult to create a buffer high enough to hide a 56-foot building. So I'd just like to point out that, I mean, this literally is going to be sticking up in the middle of a rural residential neighborhood. And while landscape creates a nice visual buffer, it's not all that great about a noise buffer. And there's going to be trucks coming in and out of here. And these people are, you know, they have horses, they have animals, they spend a lot of time outside. I just think, you know, I mean, I, and this isn't new for me. I think, you know, being a good neighbor first and foremost, and I think, you know, we've reaped the benefits of a lot of development, industrial development out in this area. And my position is that we really ought to pass on this one. It's just, I don't feel like it's the right thing to do. You cannot abate the visual of a 56-foot building for these people that live in this neighborhood. Thank you.
Mayor, council, I know that the applicant is being attentive to what's taking place in this workshop. What we're hoping, because in the workshop, it's not where council, as you are aware, you're not taking a vote. We're just looking for a consensus to proceed forward with the annexation, and also give the applicant an opportunity to keep working on the proposed PAD proposal. If it was feasible for council to give a consensus today, just to proceed with the process, with the applicant and staff understanding that we will have to come back before you with the annexation, as well as the rezoning, to make a final determination.
Mayor?
Councilmember Hugh.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in favor of moving forward with the project. I know the City of Glendale will do a better job than another government entity, working with the people. And also, don't forget, there's a $4.2 million one-time fee for the City of Glendale, and also $240,000 per year. So I'd be in favor of moving forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Tommichoff.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to clarify that the applicant was, the applicant was wanting to know whether the council would have a consensus to continue on in the direction of this development, in order to pursue their, their annexation, though. Is that, did I understand that correctly?
Mayor, council, that is correct. But also, based on the information that council is providing today with the input and the concerns that you have, it does allow an opportunity for the applicant to hear those concerns and continue to find ways to mitigate the concerns of the citizens, as well as making modification potentially to the proposed PAD, addressing some of the things that was brought up to council today.
Mayor, I'd like to point out that if, I mean, I know we don't want residential, but we already have residential west of here, and there would be a substantial benefit financially, one-time fees to residential development as well. So I, you know, I think that, for me, this one is not the right thing in the right place. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that the one-time revenues on this project is only 260,000, correct? Not the 4.2 million?
No.
No?
The, Mayor, council, the one-time fees for this particular one is estimated to be 4.2 million.
Okay.
And then can you, and then, and then the annual is 230?
The, Mayor, council, the annual is projected to be an estimate at 240,000 per year.
And then, just for the, for the, those who are watching, that 4.2 million comes in when?
Mayor, council, that would be upon, like, doing the construction plans review and construction.
Is that a one, is that over a one-year period?
After we approve.
Soon as we're done.
Mayor, council, the way that is described within the narrative, it would be built in one phase. So it would be that one time within that year in which they do the development.
And then, I, thank you. And then, if we don't do this, and the county takes, picks it up, what happens to that 4.3 million?
Mayor, council, then those revenues would go to the county.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. As is usually the case, Mr. Huggins appears and sheds some light on the subject. That's been helpful to me. The, the slide on the screen versus what I have in front of me, there's a gray area that separates the two driveways at the top and also at the bottom. In my hand, it looks like it's parking, because it's kind of hash-marked. Up there, it's a solid gray. Now, is that, is that the landscape buffer you were talking about?
Mayor, council, that, in which you're indicating, that is the parking area. The area in brown is identified as the retention area. And because we do not have the landscaping planned before you, then there would be additional landscaping that would be depicted as part of the PAD proposal.
Okay. And I realize I'm getting in the weeds, but I gotta, gotta make an indication here. So it looks to me like there's two parking lots, one on the north end and one on the south end. Is there also parking on the east and west side? Or is that grayish area that's on the slide on the screen, is that the landscape buffer that was mentioned?
Mayor, council, one second. Mayor, council, I just wanted to make sure I gave you the correct information. That is the stalls for the trucks that you're seeing to the west and east.
Okay. So that would be truck parking. All right. So if the fertilizer plant's going to continue, and it appears that, you know, that's the indication at this point, I am, I would be concerned about putting residential up against a fertilizer plant, and, and the feasibility of doing that as a developer and whatever else. So I, I've softened my resistance to the concept of industrial here. Not a slam dunk yet. I'd like to see, I'm willing to see this proceed forward and take a look at other views of the property, the elevations and that sort of thing. And they've got, I believe, I'm telling you, they have a lot of work to do with the residents in the area. It's not the city council, it's not our staff, it's the developer that has a lot of work to do with their neighbors. So as long as they know that, I, I'll concede with going forward today.
Okay. I think it concludes our discussion. Do we have a consensus to move forward? Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next.
Council item of special interest, naming of special events.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report will be Assistant City Manager Vicky Rios and our Parks Recreation Special Events Director Jim Burke.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. This is a follow-up on a council item of special interest from Councilmember Tommichoff. I'm going to be here to just kind of add the color commentary note in support of Jim, and he's going to do the heavy lifting here. So I'm going to turn it back over to him.
Thank you, Ms. Rios. And members of council, good afternoon. Slide is not advancing. There we go, excuse me. Staff have been working on and naming and developing and branding special events for a long time in Glendale. We've had some success with that, and have a pretty good team and a good process that involves multiple departments and review of the city manager's office as we move forward. Events are often named based on activity. The Touch a Truck activity, Touch a Truck event is named for what, what it actually is. The Movies by Moonlight event is named for what it is. Sometimes they're named for the location. The Live at Murphy Park is about a special event in Murphy Park. We do, when we work on naming or reconsidering, we work with the Public Affairs Department, the Special Events Staff, the City Manager's Office. And if it's downtown, which a lot of them are, we work with economic development, too, and get input from all those, and consider options before we bring a recommendation. The name changes are relatively infrequent. We did have the name change after the Pivot Strategy most recently. That was because of the major event, the Glendale Glitters bookend events were changed, and we went to much more frequent events in the park. And so we took away one name. Another change was Chocolate Affair, when we changed that to a indoor event. We wanted to make sure the community and the participants knew that it was a different event, so it had a name change to Glendale, excuse me, Chocolate Experience. That is also now an event. It's not a city event. It's run by a promoter for us. And with that, like overview, I'd be glad to discuss and answer any questions of the mayor and council.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to first point out that I brought this item up as a council item of special interest in November of last year, in the hopes that we would be able to have this discussion before we got too far along with this holiday season planning. Obviously, probably that ship has sailed, which is a pretty big disappointment to me, and multiple residents in my district. I read the memo sent out by the city manager yesterday or the day before, I guess it was yesterday. And so I referred back to the April 2021 Pivot Plan Workshop, where it says holiday lighting, doesn't, there was no mention, I actually went back through the minutes, there was no mention of a name change. It was never mentioned in that April workshop. And then I went back to, said that the, the name change was decided upon in October, but interestingly enough, in the September, I gotta get the date here, the September 14th, 2021 workshop, there's the name, Murphy, whatever it is, Murphy Park Holiday Lights. Obviously, it was decided on prior to October, because it was in the September 14th workshop. And I left the workshop wondering if the name had been changed, or if that was, was, I literally, when walked out of the workshop, checked those minutes as well. There was never any mention that the name of the event was being changed. Until the actual marketing started being pushed out, I wasn't even aware that the name had been changed. I had a lot of residents really angry about this. I just don't understand, first of all, why this would be done without any conversation with the council. We weren't even told that it had happened. And then, in the memo, we were told that it happened, but it had already happened when it, when it said it was decided. It was presented, the name was presented in September. So the name had, it had been decided before the marketing started happening in October. And my feeling is that, you know, we're here to represent the residents, we should be the voice of the residents. They have a connection to these events. That's the reason we do them, is to have, for these people to feel connected to their city. We draw on people from the outside. But they're just, I just don't understand a brand that I, maybe the word iconic is not the right word, but as well-recognized as Glendale Glitters became in the valley, that we would change the name just because we want to point out that we're making some changes to. When Coke comes up with a new flavor, they don't come up with a different name. They still call it Coke. They may say Cherry Coke, they may say Vanilla Coke, they may say whatever they say, but they don't tell you that it's something else. It's Coke. So I'm incredibly disappointed that this took this long. And I think that, I'm very disappointed that, that the council doesn't, and I had asked, I think the council should have a seat at the table at these discussions, and I'm disappointed that we did not. I don't know where, where we are on the timeline. I'd like to find that out. I mean, I've heard from multiple people today already that they said, please, change the name back to Glendale Glitters. People are incredibly upset about this, the name change. And it, they're, they have a connection to the name of Glendale Glitters. I'm disappointed Joyce isn't here today. I know she could not be here. But I know she was one of the early people in support of having this event in downtown Glendale. And I'd love to know what she thinks about it. So I'll, I'll let somebody else speak about this, but I am disappointed in the way this was all unfolded.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember, you don't have to wait for Councilmember Clark to be here. Councilmember Aldama is here, and I'll share my comments. I wasn't very happy then. I'm not very happy today that we changed the name. Glendale Glitters has been a name for over 30 years, or at least 30 years, and I never wanted to change it. It was cut, cut on surprise. I did receive some phone calls, text messages, not many, but a few, and I value those, that, to make sure that I don't let that name be changed today. The names are already changed, folks. I don't, unless this council here votes to change it, it's, I don't know if that's going to happen, but I wasn't very happy. We have to stop changing the names of traditional events that we've had here for years. I get the pivot. I jumped on board with the pivot to see where we can go with it, but I never said we can change the name. So I'm, I'm equally disappointed that we changed it. I would even go as far as asking to get it back. I think it's too late this year, because promotions have already gone out. But I was never in tune with, with changing the name. I, too, have a couple emails from Kevin, Mr. Phelps' staff, that the name was changed. And it was all based on staff. It wasn't, there was no input from the council to change the name. It was all staff. It wasn't a, it wasn't an item that needed to come through the council to change. And I think, for the most part, I think we might even need to change that policy, but I don't know if I have the support to do that. But equally disappointed that we changed Glendale Glitters' name to Murphy Light, Murphy Park Lights. Anyway, thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. The reaction I've, well, first, I'll say for myself, I didn't catch in the workshop that there was a different name to it. And I, I'm very disappointed, I've been disappointed since that time, that staff wasn't clear in their presentation to us about that change. It's part of what makes me question our transparency at times. The timing of our special event or presentations to the council has shifted from before our summer break to after our summer break. And then now, it's always said, well, it's too late to make any changes. And then the length of time that it's taken for this simple question today, that's four pages, two pages front and back, to come to us so that we can discuss it, is, to me, feels more like stalling this out, waiting the clock out, to use a sports metaphors that I'm so fond of. So, and now that's how I feel. And then from my residents, I've not heard a single positive comment. I've heard everything from shock to disappointment to anger about it. And it's as if we don't understand that the events that we have belong to the public, not to the staff, to the public, and that the seven of us are the elected representatives of the public, and things like this ought to come before us. I don't know what's next. Are we going to let staff change park names, other things like that, without clearing it? And as far as the Pivot Strategies concerned, I don't recall it ever being described that the pivot was going to be so drastic that the downtown lighting event would be unrecognizable, and therefore, the old name would not be sufficient. It had to have a new name. Because I don't think, had that been described to us, I don't think we would have said we wanted to pivot quite that far. And I personally don't. I would certainly support consensus of the council to go back to using the Glendale Glitters' name as much as possible from this day forward. Things that are already printed and out are, but everything fresh that we do from our news, news releases and newsletters and whatever else that hasn't been generated, I'd like us to go back to that name. And I'd like us to be far more careful in the future about making changes to traditions without consulting the people that own them, and that's our residents. Thank you.
Mr. Phelps?
Mayor, members of the council. So first, I, we can, we can still go back and use the name. We're not too, this is not too far down the process. So clearly, you know, we've heard loud and clear from the council, as Mr. Burke indicated, we haven't, you know, I've been here six and a half years. This is the only time we've, we really felt compelled that we had to change the name of something. I don't think there's been anything else other than the chocolate and the, and the, and the glitter. So, one, we'll make sure in, you know, going forward in the future, that we, you know, we, we talk to the council about this and try to get concurrence on what's there. We have a team that work really hard in special events. They, we have literally, I mean, dozens and dozens of events they have named over the year. And so there hasn't been a process in place to bring it back. But, but listening to the discussion this afternoon, I think clearly we can include that as part of the process. It wasn't somebody trying to do something without the council having a right to do it. It just, over the years, like, I'll use the Live at Murphy Park. That was, that was, as Jim kind of explained the process, there were a lot of different departments. departments that looked at that. They went through a whole series of kind of analysis based on their kind of experience of producing events, and they came up with the Live at Murphy Park. I think going forward in the future, if we are gonna create new events, what we'll do is we'll have staff make a recommendation of what those will be, and then we will come back forward and have a discussion with the council and get concurrence. But with regards to the glitter, we can still go back, but I just want to remind that what's, I'm not sure I understand the comment about that we didn't think the pivot was gonna be this drastic. When I, my first glitter was, the opening night was, you know, if you recall, we have everything from toys and rides to vendors, to music, to, I mean, it was, it was, and it went all the way down to Catlin Court, all the way to Glendale Avenue. Now, we're not doing anywhere near that scale now, so we're not doing vendors. We're not bringing in, you know, we're not doing in bouncy toys and all those other things. So the rationale, while we will certainly comply with what the council wants, I have to support our staff that the rationale was somewhat logical. If you're living in Chandler, and let's say you had come to Glitter for five or six years, but you came here back in 2016, and, you know, we had the wonderful event, and you knew what it was gonna be, and then you show up with your family having driven for a half an hour to learn that they aren't rides for the kids, there aren't food vendors other than the restaurants that are downtown, I think the logic was, of the staff, was, they may feel like that perhaps they were, you know, kind of bait and switch. But I agree that the name Glitter is a powerful name. It's been built upon for years upon years. I think we clearly will own the mistake by not having more input with the council, and we can certainly go back. I don't want to, I know you, somebody used the soft drink. I think we missed on New Coke here, but even big companies sometimes miss on how they do branding. But we'll clearly make sure that we come back. I guess while we're here, knowing that we can change back to the, you know, the glitter for this event, what is the preference of the council regarding the chocolate event? Again, the thought being on the chocolate festival was, we used to produce it, we no longer do. It used to be outdoor with lots of vendors. It's now indoors. But again, nothing says that we can't work with the producer and go back and use the original name. So maybe this would be an appropriate time to receive some feedback from the council.
Mayor?
And Mr. Phelps, I wish Michael was sitting here, because I thought that there was some issue with the naming on the Chocolate Affair with a local bit, so.
He's in the room.
Okay. So that'd be the only thing, that I'd like information to make sure that if we do that, if that creates an issue that we don't have right now, or... Did you hear any of that?
I did, sorry.
Could we change the name from festival? Could we go back to the original name?
Mayor and Council, there's nothing that prohibits you from going back to the name regarding the issue with Soretta Family and the chocolate company. That was the fact, that there was an understanding that there was an ongoing agreement, and we no longer were continuing that agreement with them. And that's the issue that we addressed. Didn't have anything to do with the naming of the event.
Okay, so did, my second question is, has that ever been copyrighted?
Mayor?
Because if not, it's probably being done right now.
Off the top of my head, no. But in the context of copyright law, the general usage that we've had for multiple years, we could take steps to protect that name if that's something that the council would want to do.
Yes.
I think you almost have to, if the decision's to go back to that, and I'm not making that assumption, but if we do, I think we have to. I think we have to apply for that, make sure that, if somebody's not already done it at this point.
And Mayor, that's one of the risks.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna go back to the city manager's comments. I'm really proud of our staff. I really am, and they all know that I have a lot of respect for them. And so if they spent some time changing the name from Glendale Glitters to Murphy Park Lights, I can respect that, but just like you, just like they have value in their changes, they have to consider our community, they have to consider that this has been, I think, nearly 30 years, this event has had that name. So our staff really needs to be guided with that philosophy, that you're, go meet, and that's okay, get a stakeholders group of 10 or 20, but understand the significance of the name you are trying to reimagine or change. Significant. So I'm glad that we can catch it on time to change it, because that's what I'd like to do, and hopefully the rest do. And then with regard to the Chocolate Affair, I'll say now, and I said it then, I never wanted the name to be changed. Mr. Burke mentioned earlier that it's no longer a city of Glendale event. Sure it is. We're just hiring a promoter. We're paying them, so it's still a city Glendale event, and it should have the old name on it. Look, here's the thing. I think the city manager said that we may be confusing our visitors when they show up, they no longer have the festivities. It only takes one season for you to show up and realize that, yeah, the footprint's changed, but it's still the same name, and decide whether or not you're gonna come or not. And so I think on both names, we go back. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor?
I actually, Ray was next.
Thank you, Mayor. On this topic, I've only spoken to one other council member about Glendale Glitters and the name-changing and whatnot. And she gave me a book that had to do with the soul of the city. And I believe it talked about things that are so traditional that they become integrated into being part of the city. And I think this is one of those things, and that's why I agree with the concept of keeping the name Glendale Glitters. I think it, it just, it just, it just fits with our history, and, you know, I've been here myself for 30 years, and it doesn't feel the same saying Murphy Lights. And so that's why, and I appreciate the efforts of everyone trying to distinguish it, and I get that part. But I do believe that it will be better off remaining Glendale Glitters. On the Chocolate Affair, I mean, I would like to see the name Glendale in there somewhere, if that's possible, rather than saying Chocolate Affair, say Glendale Chocolate Affair or Glendale Chocolate Experience. Either one of those, I don't have a problem with too much, but I would like to see maybe the city of Glendale's name to be associated with it. So when people say, oh, the Chocolate Experience or the Chocolate Affair, they recognize, oh, it's the Glendale event. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just, this is my, was my council item of special interest, and not that I assume that staff was trying to undermine the council, but, I mean, honestly, literally was not, did not understand until we started promoting it, that the name had even been changed. I, and I don't know if anybody else knew that the name had been changed, so. And I, just as part of this, because there was quite a bit of time in between, I had somebody do the Google Analytics on Glendale Glitters. And it's, the Google Analytics on Glendale Glitters are amazing. I mean, it's way better, that should be part of the consideration also, is, it's so recognized, Google, the analytics on how that responds in Google, even though it hasn't been used in over a year, should tell us something. And one other thing, and I had, I had grown to not enjoy what the event had become. And I heard from a lot of residents that had grown to not enjoy the carnival-type atmosphere of Glendale Glitters. And I think when we, in 2020, when we decided to go ahead and put the lights in the park, and just a few lights, maybe really scale it back, but to still do the lights, that we realized that that's all we really needed to do. We literally had to shut it down. We were in the middle of a pandemic, and we had so many people coming down here just to see the lights, that we had to, and I know Councilmember Aldama was an integral part of that, is literally had to shut the thing down because there were too many people coming down here just to see the lights. So I think that showed us that the lights are enough, and that that's what people really want to see, and that's what Glendale Glitters originally was. It kind of grew into something, it morphed into something that I don't think it was ever intended to be, so I'm fine with scaling it back, and I'm pleased that we're going to go back to the name Glendale Glitters, and I'm fine with Chocolate Affair. I'd be, I'd want to make sure that the analytics for Google are the same on Chocolate Affair as they are on Glendale Chocolate Affair, or we could, you know, I mean, we can make those two things talk to each other, but the, but how the public finds us and attends our events is an important part of what we're doing, too. And we can, we can, in our, how we promote the event, we can, you know, set the expectation that it's more of a hometown feel now in Glendale Glitters. We can, how we promote it can sort of educate the public rather than changing the name. So I'm happy with the outcome of this item. Thank you.
And I've got a couple more people that want to speak. I want to sort of wrap my part of it up to our attorney. Whatever we do, let's make sure we get the names copyrighted as soon as possible. I think that's critical. I'm gonna go to Mr. Turner and then Mr. Phelps.
Just want to say that I would definitely support using the name Chocolate Affair. Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, again, thank you for the feedback. We will go immediately working towards that. We'll make sure the glitter, we had a couple different names for December to highlight the difference in December, but we'll use the glitter brand throughout the entire run of when the lights will up, and we'll work with our promoter to go back to the original, you know, the original name. So this has been good. Going forward, any new events that we, you know, that we are working on and creating within special events, we'll make sure we have a discussion with the council prior to locking those in. And just for those citizens who maybe are watching, I don't want them to be alarmed by a prior comment. The city manager's office, nor the parks director, or anybody within general government, have a legal right to change the name of a park. There are resolutions and ordinances in place that actually spell out the specific process for how we name a park. I just want to make it real clear that there is no intent to change names from the city manager's office. We don't have that authority, and there is a prescribed process in place to do that. And so again, thank you for the feedback, and we will make those adjustments forthright.
All right. Okay, so we have a consensus for that?
Mayor, just really quickly, I just, I have some information I can provide to you very briefly about the Glendale Glitters name.
Go ahead.
There is actually, that has been, in 2020, that was registered as an operating trademark by a business owner in Catlin Court.
Okay, so we can't use that?
So I'm just wanting, I mean, you're looking for that information. I just want to give you the heads up on that. Well, the unique element is, I mean, there's the discussion about trademarking, and we can have a further discussion about that, but as this information's becoming available, and I'm looking it up to identify who's holding all that, I just want to make sure that you understand.
I think I already know. I suspect.
So, I just want to give that heads up to you. And then you were at the point of consensus, so I'm sorry to interrupt, but I came across this information and wanted to share it with you.
Okay, so I guess what I would ask before we go further is that research it and then come back to us. Michael? Research it and then come back to us and tell us what our options are.
Mayor, it occurs to me it's quite possible that that business owner did that to keep anyone outside of, you know, historic downtown Glendale from grabbing it away from us. And part of the process we're at should maybe be to reach out to them and see if they're willing to give it back to its rightful owners. Thank you.
Okay. Item six.
Downtown Campus Reinvestment Project Follow-Up Report.
Mayor, members of the council, as I mentioned last, two weeks ago, that I would be providing on a regular basis, updates on our downtown campus reinvestment project. I did send a memo out regarding, at the request of council, to have staff look at the option of perhaps, instead of redeveloping downtown, of looking at our options for building somewhere within the Westgate area. We did provide that memo. You know, this was a huge lift in less than, you know, eight working days. So everything here, from a rough order of magnitude, the numbers are, you know, you really need to allow for quite a bit of swing either direction, because we really haven't had a chance to fully analyze what's there. But I will be glad to answer any questions regarding the memo. Meanwhile, I'd like to update you as well on what's taken place in the last two weeks regarding the project, and again, this will just be kind of an update that I'll do on a regular basis. We had our first round of programming meetings with the design team, with all of our departments. So they have met with each of the departments to try to understand how they do their work, you know, how large it is, kind of what their processes are, what they need to be efficient in their doing their work. So they've met with every one of our city departments, they've met with Park to start work on the visioning element for the, for that body of work. They are now currently working, you should be seeing calendar, we can come on your calendars, so the next phase, they'll be meeting with the council, and they will walk you through many of the same questions, but a lot of different questions as well, and that will be happening forthright. We've also done some building assessment tours by our design and construction team. That's getting the project team kind of familiar with the issues that are here, that are around the building, and so that is, has taken place. Some good news, just from early conversations I was able to have with the, with our, with the Holly Street principal, was that they are starting to feel more and more comfortable that the superstructure of the, of City Hall, which would be really the shell and the concrete floors and just that, that part of it, that if you strip out all of the outside, the integrity of that is actually stronger than they envisioned. So while we kind of joke sometimes that things seem to have gotten value-engineered out when they maybe built this originally, they're feeling really comfortable that the, that the structural elements of this building is really strong, which then will allow them far more options to look at in terms of if we decide to change glazing, put in more windows, change the, change the outer cladding, that there'll be more options to select from, which always then give you, I think, better budget options to look at as well. So that was somewhat encouraging. They've got 3D models already constructed of the building, so they're really hitting the ground and running forward. So that's kind of what's happened since the last two weeks, but I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have regarding the memo. And again, we're continuing to proceed based on the council direction to continue working forward on the downtown project. There's no magic time for when we could go a different direction, but I would say that the sooner, if there's a desire of the council to maybe put more effort and energy into looking at the Westgate as an option, then this would be a good time to provide additional consensus, because we haven't really allocated a lot of financial resources. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I'd just like to point out, though, that this was Councilmember Clark's request, and she's not here, so I don't know whether I'd feel comfortable, I kind of know where I'm at, but I wouldn't be comfortable in dismissing it without her having an opportunity to, her, you know, opinion out there, so, thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna say similar, but different. I think we need to meet consensus today. We don't, shouldn't have architects and contractors waiting to hear if a council's gonna change the direction. We need to continue the direction that you received consensus on, and we should have a consensus met today, would be my opinion. And then again, there's a lot of considerations that weren't monitorized in your report. A lot of what you and your staff came up with on the reasons why we shouldn't move to Westgate are valued and are very important. For that reason, we should meet consensus today, not wait another week or another month. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, thank you. Yeah, we won't actually, given the calendar, be meeting for another three weeks, so I do think that, my position hasn't changed. I think City Hall ought to stay downtown. I was curious, though, it seemed to me that Councilmember Clark's request was to consider locations, locations, Westgate and other locations, and I don't know that that occurred, but the thing is, I don't want it to leave downtown anyway. I'm not interested in going down those other rabbit holes. Thank you.
Andy?
Yes, Mayor. No, I think we should proceed right now with, I don't want to slow down with the remodelization of our City Hall either. So I think we should just keep moving forward on that now.
Mr. Miller?
I agree with what Councilmember Hugh just mentioned. I think we should proceed with the current contract that we have. We can still discuss this if we feel needed. I felt that the memo was sufficiently detailed for me to decide on that issue, and I think we should move forward with our current plans.
Mayor? Thank you. It's my understanding that we are proceeding, though. I mean, I thought that was what we were doing, is we're still moving forward with, I mean, they're meeting with staff, they're gonna meet with us, we're still moving forward. And, I mean, based on the study and the cost, I mean, it obviously, I think, you know, the most prudent thing, especially, I'm very happy to hear that we may not have to spend the amount of money that we were anticipating, although costs are going up.
I mean, I thought that was what we were doing, is we're still moving forward with, I mean, they're meeting with staff, they're going to meet with us, we're still moving forward. And, I mean, based on the study and the cost, I mean, it obviously, I think, you know, the most prudent thing especially, I'm very happy to hear that we may not have to spend the amount of money that we were anticipating, although costs are going up. But I just don't feel comfortable dismissing the notion entirely without Councilmember Clark being here, that's all.
Okay. And for me, I understand the concerns, I understand what was brought up, I understand the frustrations of a lot of people, but the fact is, if we vacate City Hall without a renter or a purchaser, we're in essence, I believe, signing the death warrant for downtown merchants. I really believe that. I've been criticized because I said downtown businesses, many of them are hanging on by a thread. All you got to do is walk around and look, folks. I didn't make that up, just walk around and look. I think the best thing we can do is the initial plan, make the investment in downtown Glendale, spend the money, put people back to work, do economic development, which is what we're actually famous for right now. We get a better facility, we get to show the success of Glendale, and we get to start promoting, driving more business to downtown, which I think will then get its own life. We've already had developers showing a lot of interest once we announced that we were planning on doing this. As we double-talk and tell people, well, no, maybe we'll go out to Westgate or maybe we'll go somewhere else, that's not what developers want to hear. We have a reputation for doing what we say, and I think this is the time when you stand strong, keep it here, do it right, and get it done. Do you have anything else?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Look, there's many opinions about downtown, where it was, where it is, and where we're going, and I would like to concentrate on where we're going, but I also like to concentrate on that, when you look at the size of downtown and you look at the business owners who have filled vacancies, we're doing great. We're doing really good, and I invite from all over the state to come visit downtown Glendale. We're flourishing, we're doing really good. Don't look at the vacancies we have, look at the buildings that are being occupied today and the business owners who have put in their life savings into their business. We are doing great. City Hall remaining here is going to continue to help us build out Glendale, revitalize it, or downtown Glendale. I think we're doing good, but there's a lot of opinions out there of what Glendale looks like. We should continue to concentrate on the positive and where we're going with downtown with this reinvestment project is going to revitalize it even more, and that's what we should continue to concentrate on. So, I think we're doing really good. Thank you, mayor.
Mayor, one thing I'd like to point out is, and hopefully the fact that the structure of the building is better than it was expected to be, is one of the reasons that I had concern about the plan as it was proposed is it creates, we would vacate City Hall for two and a half years. That's, and not only that, turned us into a construction site, those, all of that equipment's not going to be, I think, moved in and moved out of downtown on a daily basis, it's going to be parked down here. So, I did have a lot of concern about the effect of the project itself on downtown. So, however we can, you know, mitigate the fact that we would, you know, shorten the amount of time, whatever we can do to move the project where it's not going to be quite so. I mean, I do have, was, when I saw that, two and a half years of a construction site, and I don't know how many people work in the building a lot, that, you know, a lot of the restaurants and stuff rely on those people for their lunch business down there, would have an effect on the downtown merchants. So, that was one of my concerns. But I agree, I mean, I all along have been asking to do something with City Hall, I think since I got here, that, I mean, and I still, I still believe that. Even if we were to move to Westgate, we still have this building, so we need to invest in it, I agree with that. Hopefully, we can value-engineer that cost down and shorten the amount of time that people need to be out of the building. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to clarify something I said because Vice Mayor and I are, we're both trying to say the same thing, we're saying it totally different, so that, if that didn't get completely confused, I don't know it will. I'll give you a good example. My wife, myself, and four of our friends ate dinner downtown Glendale on Saturday late afternoon, and we had a fantastic dinner, Haas Murphy's, food's incredible, place was packed. So, if you're there right then when we were there, we had to wait a long time before we finally got seated, they did a fantastic job, had a fantastic dinner, but they're not that way every day. So, my point is, owning a restaurant, owning a chain of restaurants for many years, I understand the restaurant business, and you can't survive off of three or four really great nights and afternoons, and then have other days that are slow. Our downtown is there, it's hanging on, it's doing good, but it can do way better. And as a business owner in the past, I guarantee you, by the investment that we put in downtown, we will help our merchants be more successful. By them being more successful, we in turn, the city becomes more successful. So, I don't want you to think that downtown's a ghost town, it's not. Okay? So, that, I know that was certainly your concern. It's not. But there are, there are a lot of merchants downtown, not only restaurants, but other merchants, that could use a lot more help, and the only way to do that is to get people to come here. People have to have a reason to come to downtown Glendale, and I think that starts with this leadership right here, this is as far as making that decision that we're going to drive people to downtown so the merchants can do well. That work for you?
Thank you, mayor. I think that statement is valued, and I know that many downtown business owners will appreciate that. We are doing good, and look, we're spending $70 million in a building, a park, and a City Hall, and the parking garage, and everything else. That only betters downtown, and so again, I want to ask our citizens to join us in celebrating that we're going to remodel our building for the betterment of downtown and for those who visit us. Thank you, mayor. Appreciate that.
Any other comments?
Mayor, I just wanted to support the Vice Mayor and his positive comments about downtown, and I know he says those things not just because downtown's in his district, but because it's absolutely true. And I think all of us take pride in our downtown, and coming out, you have to understand, coming out of the pandemic, yeah, the pandemic was hard on a few businesses, there's no question about that, but coming out of the pandemic, downtown's doing it strongly, and we have new restaurants that have opened up, we have new businesses and formerly vacant storefronts. In fact, if you wander downtown now and see an empty storefront, it's a very good likelihood the city owns it. So, we have exciting businesses that are down here that are promoting downtown and bringing in food truck events and additional movies and, and all of that is just very strong positive development. So, it's not hanging on by a thread. It is better now than it was a year ago, and it'll be better a year from now than it is today.
Okay. No other conversation? We don't need, we don't need a consensus either, correct? Okay. Next item, city manager's report. Mr. Phelps.
Yes. I'd like to just maybe take a brief moment to recognize our Public Affairs Department media team, which has recently received a number of nominations for outstanding work in the upcoming 2022 Broadcast Industry Awards competitions, and there's several different competitions nationally. The team of Sue Breeding, Jessica Minch, Louis Hacinto, and Mike has garnered three nominations in the National Savvy Awards for Excellence in City and County Communications. In addition to the Savvy Awards, our team has two nominations in the Public Affairs category in this year's esteemed Rocky Mountain Southwest Region Emmy Awards. In fact, the City of Glendale is the only city to garner any nominations in this category. We'll find out on October 1st how successful we were, so we wish them best of luck. And then finally, Sue Breeding was selected by the Rocky Mountain Southwest Chapter Board to represent the chapter as a trustee for the National Emmy Organization due to her longtime leadership and excellence in broadcast industry. And, you know, we all get a chance to see the great work that comes out of our Public Affairs team, and I think this is not a surprise to any of you that they have been recognized by their peers in the industry. And so, best of luck to the team, and that does complete my report. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City Attorney?
No report today, thank you.
Council item of special interest, each council member has the opportunity to indicate topics that they'd like to have discussed at this council at a future workshop. Councilmember Hugh?
I have none, mayor.
Councilmember Milner?
Nothing today.
Councilmember Tom Chough?
Nothing today.
Councilmember Turner?
Not today, mayor.
Vice Mayor?
I do, yes, mayor, thank you.
I hope that this is the last time, seriously, that we have to, someone has to bring up this item of interest, I think, I know I brought it up once, this'll be the second time someone else has brought it up, but, and I spoke to the city manager about it. Enough is enough. We need to fix the item of interest policy. I didn't practice a policy, we need to fix it. Councilmembers, no council member nor the mayor should have to wait six months, a year for an item of interest to be answered. I do want to recognize the ones that are timely, I appreciate it, and I'm sure everyone else does, but we have to fix that. The city manager did mention that he's working on something to fix that, but we have to, that's my item of interest, if you can bring back a report on how we're going to more efficiently address items of interest timely. Thank you. Thank you, mayor.
Can I get a motion going to executive session? Move.
Okay.
I have a motion, a second going to executive session, any discussion, hearing, unall in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, vote nay. As I do have at council meeting, it is recessed.